I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Firely.
Here.
Councilmember Conklin.
Here.
Councilmember Missouri.
Here.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Here.
Councilmember Breaker.
Here.
Councilmember Morris.
Yeah.
Mayor Long.
Here. Apologize for the slightly late start. We had an executive session to deal with legal issue. Approval of minutes from March 21st, regular meetings. Motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Firely.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Breaker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Public comments or requests for a resolution 2022-15.
The L H U band is asking for permission to hang a banner across Main Street from April 5th, or April 25th through May 5th, advertising their recital on May 5th, 2022. And I would handle getting the pinup permit for that.
What's the wish, counsel? Motion for a end of second. Any further questions or comments?
Don't we have to approve the use of the facilities before we hang the banner advertised?
The recital is actually at L H U. They just want to have a practice recital at Triangle Park. So the banner is advertising the recital on their property.
So whether we grant use of the park isn't going to keep the recital from happening? Any other questions or comments on the motion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Firely.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Breaker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris. Mayor Long.
Yes. For B, use of Triangle Park for Lock Haven University Band Recital Practice.
If, if you'll allow me, your honor, B through G can all be adopted as one motion if you want the Director of Community Life to go through each of those and then if everyone's in favor, it could be one motion.
That's fine if someone was, the motion is that effect after she's gone through them. Do that.
The use of Triangle Park by L H U Band, then that is actually on April 20th, not the 27th. And that will be from 5:30 to 8:30 for a practice recital and that is to help promote the recital that they're having on the 5th. Use of Petty Park by Clinton County Men Sunday League. They would like to use this for Sundays and occasionally Saturdays from April through August. They are in charge of the maintenance on the fields and along the fence and I'll work with them to make sure that there's no scheduling conflicts. They've already provided liability insurance. And the use of Petty Park by Keystone Little League. Also April through August and work with them on any scheduling conflicts with the fields. And the use of Hoobruin Park by Living Hope United Pentecostal Church. They want to have a community day on September 24th from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. They want to provide games, popcorn, live music, hot dogs throughout the day. It would be free of charge for community members to just come and hang out. And I work to organize it as well. And then a request to use Zindel Park on June 4th, 2022 for lead hikes. This would just be like one or two hikes on National Trails Day in Zindel Park led by experienced hikers that want to, they'd just be showing them where, you know, the trails that are already established are. So this would be, this wouldn't be anywhere on property that's not already been used for events and stuff.
So what's?
Oh, and also the use of Piper Harmon, Hooverman and Amrenville Parks for the Keystone Central Summer Rec program.
Does anyone have a problem with making the motion altogether or does anyone want something separated out?
I probably just want some alterations to the wording of that. And I think a day of service is an excellent idea, something that says, something that says church service is open to misinterpretation. Service by the John.
Yeah, it's just like a day of service, like a community, I think they're advertising it as a community day.
Doesn't make a difference. It doesn't come off as a religious ceremony, yes.
So if it says use of Hoobruin Park for a day of service, then.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve all B through G?
You do.
Any further questions or comments on?
Yeah, a couple, actually. Number one, the address of Living Hope Pentecostal Church.
When I Googled it, it was Williamsport, Pennsylvania.
So I assume you have the visual casey that is a contact?
Yes. Caleb's.
Okay. No, that's okay.
Any further questions or comments? At least prepare the vote. Okay, all right, call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Firely.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Breaker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Any other public comments or?
I have none, your honor.
Okay, unfinished business 5A consideration of resolution number 22-16 applied for D C N R grant funding.
So I'm working on a grant applied to D C N R for the Hoobruin Park improvements. This will be Phase One of the improvements. The application will request $325,000 for a total project cost of $650,000. We have the opportunity to collaborate with the Pennsylvania Municipal League and Kaboom, who every year they grew up playground projects and happy the old days. And they are looking to work with us in 2024, which is why we are finding now how things work out, what will most likely line up by 2024. The application is due on the 4th and will include updates to the park on everything on the east side. So we're going to do east side phase one, west side phase two, playground, pavilion, restroom facility, parking lot, upgrades to the ball field. And we're looking at doing a small community garden as well. So we've been working with, and you know, Casey Tony and John Hart as well have been working together on kind of making a design that fits for everyone as well as we've done a lot of engagements, still some are planned. So I just need a resolution to apply and I'll submit the grant on Wednesday.
What's the wish, counsel?
We should apply.
I second.
Motion for a end of second. Any further discussion, comments?
Did you say it's due the 4th?
Yes.
Oh.
Wednesday.
That's today.
Oh, it's due the 6th, sorry. I was looking at the wrong date.
Yeah, okay, okay. I was gonna say you better get up.
I'll wait to touch that too. Anything else? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Firely.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Breaker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. I'd be awarding construction contract for D V G Piper Harmon.
Uh, that's been upgraded to a C D V G.
Okay. C D V G.
This is the award for the Piper Harmon Playground Rehabilitation Project, C D V G Project 2018 and 2019. After a withdrawal bid from John Mustazie Construction, we are recommending award to Bowman Excavating Paving Concrete in the amount of $230,927.77. They were recommended by our engineers, Dr. Forman, and are under review by Cedar Cog. So I just ask that your motion be award the project Bowman Excavating Paving Concrete pending Cedar Cog review.
What's the wish, counsel? Motion for a end of second. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Firely.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Breaker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. I see awarding the extension of the garbage collection services.
I'll let the Director of Public Works speak to that.
So to extend, we're looking at the trash collection around town in the parks and also the waste collection. The tree plant, sledge wall contracts, the same vendor, J J Peters until the 7/31st of 2022.
Is there any change of price from the existing?
There is no change in price.
What's the wish, counsel?
Move reward contract.
Motion for a end of second. Any other questions? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Firely.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Breaker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. That takes care of Stephen, correct?
It did, your honor.
I'd be award the bid for the Coming Village Tank Rehabilitation Project.
And I'll let the Director of Public Works speak to this. I did put this as well as the documentation for the next item on the agenda in your bid today. They just came in from the engineer.
So for project number 22, 2022-1, we want to thank sort of anchor team. A low bidder is worldwide industry board at $84,906. They come recommended from the engineers and they have their past qualifications. So the recommendation is to prove them to do the work.
So.
And a second. Any questions or comments about the motion?
Yeah, tell me any reason why they're substantially lower.
I, so the market about our engineer, he just stated that this is what they do. He just did the ones off 99. When you go off the state law exit, they're coming off the shallow road there. They produce two water tanks in the front.
Any other questions, your honor? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Firely.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Breaker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. 5F, Jeff Knowles, Castania. Or.
Alright, so project number 22-3, vacuuming water, we received one bid and exceeded the engineer's estimate. So I just picked the engineer last week when we opened bids, we want to get this rebid.
Oh, what's the wish, counsel? It was to reject all bids.
Reject all bids.
I move we reject them.
I'll second.
Motion for a end of second. Any further questions or comments on the motion?
Do you want us, do you want us to include to revisit it like at a later date or are you going to come back and ask this to bid it again?
Um, I guess I should ask if we can just get it ready to revisit right now so we can have.
So what, what are you looking at to amend this motion?
Later this year or sometime in the fall?
Yeah, it'll be some, it'll be this, it'll be for a project this fall. So I guess spring, summer bid for a project this fall.
Okay.
Amendment and your still seconded?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
Has this bill done what we're seeking before?
Affiliates, yes. They did the Spring and Fourth Street and Large Street projects last year.
Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Firely.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Breaker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Any other unfinished business? I have none, your honor. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. How much was it over? The Esteban, because I don't ever see the Esteban, 300?
Yeah, it's over $80,000.
Alright, I missed it.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, new business 6A, acceptance of the resignation of Joseph Sanders, the fourth's fire relief driver.
Uh, for many, many, many years, Joseph Sanders, the fourth, who is the captain at Citizens Home Company, has been a part-time fire relief driver for the city on and off. And he submitted his resignation effective 8th first. I think we are very grateful for the time that he served with the city and the time he's put in. Just add that since he was the candidate for remedy of his resignation.
What's the wish, counsel? And a second. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Firely.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Breaker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. 6B, discussion on regional policing, councilmembers Breaker, Firely, and Gass, we can talk about this tonight. I'll hand it forward to Councilmember Breaker.
Um, so over the last five months, I've had some discussion with people in the community, different municipalities. One before I was running, and stuff like that, people come up to me and ask different thoughts and I'd ask them different thoughts. Not being a part of the 2017 regional police study, I had to do a lot of homework. Got stuff for Gray, which you all got in the package too. I talked to Joel. I talked to past mayor, Rick Bala, gave him a call, but just to see what the good, the bad, the ugly were back in the time because I, I didn't know much of anything. I talked to some local leaders, I mean municipalities, just constituents, just to give an idea of where things were at because I've heard the good, you know, we can save money. So I just wanted to bring this up tonight. So just to rehash things, the 2017 study that we all got and the different plans over there, it was open up to my, my municipalities. A site suggestion area municipalities with our police force with this ban would were, you know, Hall would all be disbanded. If I'm, if I'm incorrect, correct me, but that, this is what I've played a part of the, all that there. And we're going to create a new regional police force with a new building. We're going to rebrand and sell some of our police cruisers along the way. So that was the plan in 2017. As we all know, that did not happen. It got overwhelmingly, no support from the community. And some of the words that, and some of the thoughts that I got from other people, I talked to them, some were open-minded. At the time, they thought it was a good intention, it's hopeful. There was a shock, surprise and all, good figure. One, one person said that it felt like a nuclear explosion went off when that took place. So I'm just trying to report some of the, some of the conversations I had. Some people were offended. So I thought that was interesting. One person said it was a good idea for the county, but felt the regional police project was being forced on the other municipalities with their input, development of it. So I thought that was interesting, what they had to say. So where do we go from here today? The city has a, I think they have an image problem still from 2017 with the regional police force. I think we could fix that. When I talked about the nuclear explosion, the, the financial figures were just alarming. And as, when I look down, they're alarming and you, whoever's on the council at the time, when you look down, they're probably alarming as well. There's still some fear that lingers that Lock Haven still wants to take over the municipality forces in Clinton County. We want to control everything. And I talked to some people. And there's still some negative perception five years later that the thoughts across Clinton County that we want to only pursue this because we want to save financially and it benefits us and everybody else. So I thought that was interesting and that's why I just wanted to come out and shed some light on that. But also I think we need to repair that image and I think we can do that. I think we, Lock Haven has a lot to offer, our communities. Our police is a fantastic group of professionals that are highly trained. And I think we have some choices to make. We can sit back and do nothing and continue as, as, as we are. I think we, as a, at least now that I'm on and on the council and I kind of have enough beaten, I, I did listen to, you know, in the past and where we're at today. I have no intention to ever, as it currently was in 2017, to say, hey, I think we need to resurrect the, the regional police study as it was back then. One, it wasn't needed back then. And today there are people in the community that still don't want it. And I think we need to reassure our neighboring communities that that's not the direction and that's not our desire to help win back that trust. And I think it's important that we work as a community, just as we do with other services. We need Mill Hall, we need Lock Haven, Woodward Township, we need Cassian for a lot of different things, our support. I think we have a lot to offer other communities and I think it's a pretty exciting what we have here. And the question is, what do we do with that? Currently, Mill Hall has contracted services with Lamar and Castania. So since 2017, that has come out of the regional police study because there was different sections. Woodward Township is now providing contractual police services to Gallagher Township. So that's new. And what I would like us to, you know, hopefully get to is have a conversation, maybe a separate committee where we can get together and start thinking outside the box, what can Lock Haven do or offer? Or even start planning in case of a neighboring municipality wants to join us. What can we offer them in advance? What would the cost be? And plan jointly like that. So Doug and I were talking about contracted police services. That's what Mill Hall's doing. That's what Woodward Township is doing. Regional Police Force was, was a complete takeover of everything. And the thought is that we, we're not taking over, we're just providing a service. If somebody would like that service, so be it. But I think, you know, having a discussion with that, maybe even with a separate committee, even go a little further into it to prepare for the future. I think it'd be worth our while because I believe we have a lot to offer our neighboring communities and I think it's important to plan instead of be reactive. Because sometimes we react and we're not exactly sure where we're going, but we can be proactive with this. Probably does it benefit us in the sense of who we are as a society, but it's those around us potentially who want to buy into that, so.
So what you're proposing then is that perhaps?
Yeah, we create a separate committee, discuss, having a, a council looking into the city offering contracted police services to neighboring.
Something you could bring back to council?
Yes.
For the whole council to consider.
And that would be just a committee from, from our group, we're not suggesting that we bring in other.
Correct, this, this would be the starting.
To start with just a group of us.
Yeah, this is just a starting point of.
What do we have to offer?
What do we have to offer? And then from that committee, if we decide this would be a good idea, then we bring it back to council and.
I think it's a great idea to form a committee to at least look at it. I mean, I don't think we have anything to lose by having a committee to look at it and to, you know, see if there, if there's something that we can put together, some kind of that.
So Greg, if we form a committee, obviously you can't have a majority of council members because that would be so.
Right, it would have to be three or less and then you'd have problems. I'm not putting words in your mouth.
No, I'm.
Usually some committee includes, well, not usually, it always includes me and it would include whatever is the appropriate department.
Yeah.
So it included the chief.
Right. Well, sure, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be us.
So if we put together a committee of you, the chief, and then three members of council, obviously Mr. Breaker is very interested in this, so it suggests that he'd be one of those members. And Doug has mentioned several times that he's.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I certainly would be willing to serve and I thank Councilman Breaker for, for leading the way here. I would just add a couple of real brief comments. In, in one of the conversations we had with Mayor Tom Bossard of Mill Hall, it was really enlightening. You know, you guys all know Tom probably a lot better than I, but he, he really was able to fill in some gaps with why the regional police study was so overwhelmingly rejected. And really kind of clarified that, how it was perceived from a municipal point of view. But then also was able to fill in on a positive side, the services that they are providing. And one thing that Jeff didn't mention is not only are they providing services to Castania and Lamar, they've also been asked and are seriously considering adding on Porter Township. So they're kind of going in that direction, for lack of a better phrase. Woodward Township is now taking care of this direction. You also have, it's, you know, really easy to forget, you have Pine Creek Township, one, two, and Dunstable that town to take care of that direction. So if you really look at it objectively and put aside all the hundred-year-old, you know, animosity toward the city of trying to force this down everyone's throat, save money only for the city. So you really have on a small scale, regional policing already. You have Mill Hall taking care of a few other municipalities. You have Woodward Township taking care of a couple others. You have Pine Creek, one and two, and Dunstable taking care of a couple others. And Tom pointed out that this would be a great way if the city would decide to move forward and offer contracted services and maybe get a municipality to come on board with us. That three, four years down the road, a legitimate conversation could happen about joining together to form a true regional police service. Now again, does that have to happen? No. Could it happen? Maybe. The last thing I mentioned is that he pointed out that, and he said that we could share this because this is pretty common knowledge that they've been approached several times by Ballvee Go Township to offer police services. They have chosen not to do that because of where Ballvee Go Township lies, particularly Hogan Boulevard. A large amount of retail theft with Walmart and Lowe's and those other businesses there that if they would add that on, they would have to add at least one full-time officer, probably another police cruiser. So they're not going to do that. So they're not going to do that because it's not cost effective for them. However. The city certainly has the capability perhaps to pick up that kind of coverage. To maybe then go back to that municipality and say, hey, we, we're open to that, here's our costs. Would you consider that? And you know, as Jeff said, maybe our costs will be cost prohibitive. We don't know that till the chief and Greg and somebody can say, hey, it's this dollar amount. Right now, Mill Hall charges fifty five dollars an hour, that's going to go up because of the gas cost. Woodward Township is charging sixty five dollars an hour, that is going to go up because of the gas prices. So again, what is our number? Is our number eighty five dollars? Is our number a hundred dollars an hour? And then it's up to the other municipality to say. Okay, that's reasonable, we'll, we'll do that or no, there's no way, we're not, we're not paying that. Well, then fine, as Jeff mentioned. Then we stay the way we are, it's not our problem, but at least. We would be reaching out in a positive way to say, hey, we have a professional force that can provide these services. Here's a way to partner on a small scale. And it would provide a little bit of revenue back to the city and that's what Tom said, you know, my last comment, Tom said, hey, we, we. Make, we generate about twenty five thousand dollars a year. Is that a lot of money?
In addition to the cost of their police department?
Right. Is that a lot of money? No, but that pays for. A, B, C, and D that maybe we couldn't have. So again, that's really not why you do it, but. It doesn't hurt when it adds a little bit back to the general fund.
I'd be willing to be on the committee. I think it, it's something that's worth our while to look at.
All right, so what I'm gathering is that Steve would like to be on it too.
No, I don't.
Okay, good. All right. Before I get to you, or I will get to you. At, at this point, what we're looking at is Jeff and.
Yep.
Or.
No, I would be on it, but if, if Richard or, or you, Mayor or Rick want to be on it, I would be glad to step aside and, and hear once it's brought back to us. If no one else wants to do it, I am glad to be the third.
Before we move forward. You have.
Yeah, it's, it's okay to be idealistic. And I'm in favor of regionalization. I remember the study from two thousand two, seven and seventeen, we spent a lot of time at. I think I remember Tom Barcer, it only came to one meeting. And when we handed out the paperwork, that was the last we saw. The emphasis then was because the state was going to start to charge municipalities for PSP coverage. And there was a fee associated to that, so they were all jiggling around trying to figure which way would be the cheapest to go, regionalization? Or pay that fee? They waited it out and there's no fee at this time. So it was, and it was sticker shop to them. Bald Eagle Township, if I remember right, was like nine hundred and some thirty five thousand dollars. And they just didn't have a police department, they weren't used to spending that type of money, they did have sticker shop, like you said. The other municipalities were the same way, but they had nothing to offer back to the regionalization. They had no police cruisers, no, no policemen, they had, didn't have radios or guns, it was total startup money for them. So yes, it was very expensive if you go start a police department. And I don't know, with us putting the time and energy at three different times. And all the meetings we had and what we initiated to try to get them to come, I don't know if we should spend any more time or energy on it. Until they come forward and say, hey, we would like you to give us a proposal. Because those figures can be figured out when we use the cover test in here. And whenever they had a court case. They were okay for coverage and they paid their, they paid their bills and our police patrolled and covered. But they had a case that ran the lawyers and trial, ran that up very high and they said, oh, we don't want any more police coverage, we'll take PSP and then they could have to cover it all. So we were regional a little bit and we offered to Flemington and a couple of our neighbors. But. They didn't want us then and I'm not sure they want us now. And they're going with the low bid, they're going with Mill Hall who can give it to them at fifty five dollars an hour and I think our fee was. Costs were like ninety five, so we're, we're a lot more expensive. If Mill Hall doesn't want to do it and they're in that municipality, in that Bald Eagle Township. I'm not sure we should be running up there with our one or two officers on duty. At a time worrying about shoplifting or petty theft or whatever. Now, if they all want to sit down and talk serious about it, that's one thing. And I'm supposed five years later, we have to do another study, which was provided free. And from an expert and he gave real costs. And the idea wasn't that it was going to all be Lock Haven, it was a regional thing. For the good of the region, we do regional store, we do regional water, we do other things, but they need us for that, so they, they like us for that. And there is an animosity against the city back as far as even if I can remember with the Dyke Levy. Situation, it's Lock Haven and we're not going to pay a penny to help them do it. And so we fro- footed the bill for everything. And we paid for it and it's there and it is protecting the community. And they didn't want to play, they don't want to come down and help us out. So. I don't think we should. You guys can sit around and talk about it if you want, but staff's pretty busy right now. And I think you shouldn't waste our time doing it until you have real. It might have been a pre-election concern of yours and then once you finally read the studies and saw whatever it's really about, you went around and got to talk to these other. People in municipalities. That's their point of view and you evidently formed one of your own. And I just don't know if we should, I, I don't know if we should pick any business up. Or that we should worry about it until we can really truly speak of a regional thing, until the state comes back and charges them for PSP coverage. I don't think you'll see it.
I don't know that, and Steve, I respect your opinion about all this, but I'm not sure that that's exactly what we're suggesting at this point. I think, at least I was hearing a suggestion that let's form a committee of one part of our. Council that is going to at the very least say, what is it costing? What are our options and where could we possibly go from here? Not necessarily that we're going to try to establish a regional police force or anything like that, but to at least look at where we're at. And what might be things that we could do and what, and something that could happen. No studies, none of that sort of thing, but just a conversation, am I correct?
Correct.
And I, I don't necessarily think there's any reason why we couldn't at least do something like that. But it's not exactly what has been done in the past, but it's looking at what could we possibly do in the future? I mean, we're looking at budgets and we know that the police department's our biggest expense. You know, that's where we spend the most of the taxpayers' money and if there's some, something, if there's some possibilities out there, maybe now's a good time to at least look at what. Other options or what our options might be and if regionalization isn't an option right now today, then what other kind of things might there be? I, I don't think, and I'm not talking about spending. You know, twenty hours a week looking at something like this, maybe an hour here or there to at least have a conversation with the chief who knows some of these things, with Greg who has some other information. You've obviously been around and done some different things, I have some thoughts on some of those numbers. Just because I happen to know who the police officers are and I know we're already funding their police force. I mean, I'm not trying to be, I mean, people that work for some of these police force are retired from the city of Lock Haven, we're already helping. I mean, that's, you know, that's how they can afford to offer some of these things so inexpensively, but let's look at those. Let's look at those possibilities, do we have, are there other options for us where we can develop something along that?
So I appreciate Councilman Stevens bringing up, you know, his opinion and, and one point, it's, and I meant to mention this. Steve is correct that the impetus behind the whole last study was the governor's. Declaration that he was going to institute this fee. Attacks on municipalities that didn't have a police. So that was brought up two times, was voted down. Election time came up, it went away. So I contacted the Pennsylvania Municipal League. And said, hey, where is this bill? Is it still laying somewhere? Is it active? And Amy Sturgis, who we all know, got back and said, listen, it's exactly what happened. Got voted down twice, election year's coming up. Went away, they said, they. Strongly anticipate that when the governor election is over. The appropriate amount of time goes by. That Pennsylvania State Police funding issue has certainly not gone away and it's probably gotten worse. And that will be brought up by either governor. Because somebody's going to pay for that. So it's coming at some point, is that three years down the road, is that four years down the road? We don't know that. But the anticipation is that it will be brought up again. And the funding issue is worse, that it probably has a better chance to get. Up for a legitimate vote. Now again, we all know, who knows if that's going to occur? But it's going to come up in discussion again and we all know that'll get the press coverage because it's going to be attacks on Flemington, it's going to be attacks on Castaneda. And again, the point that Mayor Bossa was making, and I just thought it was a good point. If we get something. In place, we're collaborating. With a neighboring municipality. And these other entities are already collaborating and maybe adding to it. Then when the real discussion comes up for a regional police. It could be considered because it's not a new concept, it's really a concept, why do we merge all these? Parts together instead of creating something new? And we could probably save the sticker shop by not building a new building right away, which costs two, three, four million dollars. Maybe we keep what we have for a couple of years. So I agree with you, Barb, I mean, I, I think. A few hours of discussion, getting some numbers. You know, from our already busy staff, that they can produce those numbers pretty quickly and then say, all right, now we know the number. Let's, let's see if anybody's interested.
Why don't I ask the, the two council members that have a chat, if they'd like to say anything before. Do you have anything you would like to say on this issue?
Yeah, yeah, I do, uh, look, I, I was around for a couple of those and. Uh, if you, if you already talked to. To former Mayor Malow, I'm sure he, he led to him, the fact that we. There was obviously a lot of misunderstanding from the other communities because there was no, this was not a desire for, matter of fact, we even talked about, we'll give up the space. You decide where you want it, if you want to put it in Flemington Borough, put it in Flemington Borough, if you wanted it, you know, we, we made that, we made that. I mean, we, we're nothing in paper, but we made that discussion and said, look, this isn't us taking over, this is us being the catalyst to get this started. But, but, you know, it, it's hard and, and I would like to see, well, I think that. Looking at numbers again is a great idea, especially looking at where the budget's going to be. And I think that if that, if that suggestion comes up again, two or three years from now, or even a year from now, I hope it's. From another municipality and not one that we make, because the minute we make the suggestion. It is not received well, even in good relationships, it's not received well. I, you know, I sit on an inter, inter-community. Authority right now and it's like sometimes, most of the time it's very good. But there are many times where it's been like a target on my back. And, and I've just told them, I've told them more than, look, you can have that discussion all you want, I'm not staying for that. And, you know, and.
Well, as usual, I do not understand the math. I don't understand how Mill Hall is making the hundred and fifty percent markup on their rental program. And with. Enough spare capacity to take on two additional townships. And I ask myself, what kind of policing do you get? Out of ten hours a week on the assumption that one third of that time is actually providing patrol services? Is this a real police force at all or is it just a way of fending off? The state coming after you on a police tax? And so if we look into the city, I would be surprised if the city has. And I'm open to be instructed on this, but I'd be surprised if the city has sufficient spare capacity to even contemplate. Policing for people towns.
So I don't know that that's where we're going at this point, that was brought up as one of many things, this, this was just about finding out what are the costs, does it cost for hours?
So I'm, and I can't understand why Gallagher Township would pay a hundred thousand bucks a year. Uh, to get a remote policeman, they get hired policeman. And equipment, that's what it is. So I'm fuddled about the math, but I'm open to be instructed by my colleagues if they want to go this way, but those are the kind of issues I think need to be addressed.
Well, what's really interesting is each community gets to decide. What they do, so Mill Hall, order Lamar. Woodward Township, Gallagher Township, they're happy. Right now, we're happy with what we have.
Yeah.
You know, I, you know, so.
The, the, the boards are happy, I will challenge.
Right, so that, that's, but that's where they're at right now. And back in twenty seventeen, that wasn't there. And everything's to be potentially evolving. It may not go anywhere, so, but to sit back and. Do nothing, I think is irresponsible. I think there's a potential to help other communities out if they want it. So what I'm trying to say is. Twenty seventeen, stop. There are other leaders out there, I mean new leader. I'm part of the, part of it, you're part of it, there's other leaders out there and they may want to. Bury the hatchets, so to speak, look. Things have happened in the past, great, but just because it happened in the past doesn't mean. Things are going to continue as is in twenty twenty two. And beyond. I'm, I'm an optimist in that regards and if somebody wants to join in, I think. I think it's great, if they don't want to join in, that's great too, because that's their part of me, but. I think it's just worth our while just to see how things would be.
Well, provided they don't want to bury their hatchet in the back of your skull.
But that's, that, but I'm, I'm willing to, to bet on people, I'm willing to bet on communities. Look, I've been in part of community for twenty seven years and as, as an educator. I've been here and I, I believe in people and. I think we can have dialogue that is respectful. Regardless and I'm willing to, to, to do that here.
I think we, we vetted the issue itself, whether we want to have a committee to investigate. Enough to decide if someone want to make a motion to that, in fact. And we can vote. Given our inputs as for or against. I think it's time, somebody want to make a motion?
Well, I'd be happy to make the motion to form a committee, which is something good for me.
So to form this with the three people that put their names out there?
Yes.
And, and of course, the city manager and the chief of police. Is that your motion?
It is.
Second. Motion to floor?
Second.
And a second.
Aren't you allowed to form a committee without those of council?
He is.
And so why vote on it? Or why have it?
Makes it a subcommittee of council instead of a subcommittee of mayor.
It's even better.
I think the important motion is that it shows that.
Shows their support.
I was just going to say that you're saying that we're acting on behalf of council, not as individuals. And I think that's very important because.
On behalf of the mayor.
That's not, we, we're not speaking for you, we're not, we're not selling anything. Yeah. If we come in with Easter eggs to sell, you'll know we're in trouble.
Bean bar chocolate eggs.
All right, so we have, we have motion to floor, I think we've discussed it in length. Unless somebody has something pressing?
Read the motion, please.
The forming committee consisting of. The subcommittee of council consisting of council member. Brinker, Firely, Missouri, Chief Smith, and the city manager. To look into the cost of. Uh, what it would be for the city to provide services to an exterior.
I would be, I would prefer it to say feasibility rather than cost, but.
There's an expiration date to the.
When they report back to.
I was just saying, because we're going to go back to council.
Okay, we have motion to floor and a second, we're clear on that motion, call for the vote.
Councilmember Firely?
Yes.
Councilmember Conflue?
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson?
No.
Councilmember Brinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris?
Yeah.
Mayor Ball?
Yes.
On that topic, your honor, if I could correct the record, it was stated that the perception is, at least. That this solution was. Framed down the throat of the other municipalities. The other municipalities approached the city and asked if it would be the host. Second of all, seven options were provided for the municipalities to. Second of all, seven options were provided for the municipalities to consider. The majority, four of those solutions excluded the city. So it can't be perceived that the city was attempting to take over when four of the seven solutions didn't include the city at all. But included the other municipalities that at that time had an interest because the city had its own force. So I understand the absence from facts can make perceptions change, but that is the fact. And so, you know, I, I don't want people either here or at home to think that mistakenly the city did in fact try to shove anything down any municipality's throat. Because that absolutely did not happen. As the person who led DCD's quest to perform this task on. You know, for free for the nine municipalities, it took a lot for some of those municipalities to produce the years necessary. And the city helped them with that free of charge. To get Castaneda to agree to participate, I had to stand in the middle of a street and wait for their supervisor to come to a slow. Not even stop, just crawl in his truck while I marched beside it while he signed that paper. Because he wouldn't come into the parking. So I certainly understand there's an animosity that I have to risk my life in the lane of traffic. To get somebody to participate from a neighboring municipality. But I think a lot of that's unfounded if you're talking about this particular study. When the majority of options excluded the city and certainly. If you have the perception the city tried to take over, you, you can't have read page thirty-six to curve to page thirty-eight, which is where the parts that exclude the city begin. So perhaps council members, mayors, or supervisors from other municipalities that have that perception should just revisit this study themselves. Before making those comments.
People can perceive it, but they're proceeding based on incomplete information.
Or perhaps it will be, maybe the new committee will be good, goodwill ambassadors.
And that could be the case. Okay, so congratulations, you're, you're now on a committee.
Another committee.
You have one more thing that you can attest.
Awesome.
So I know we're leaving it up to you to schedule when actually it will be. Brief response on your progress. Okay. Sixty, notification, the award of grants for the community foundation.
The city received grants in the amount of two thousand five hundred towards the twenty twenty-two. City Beach Recreation Program from the Community Foundation, as well as five thousand dollars for the Summer Concert Series. And four thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twelve cents towards the Hannah Park pickleball courts. Any amount that the city receives in grants in excess of the remaining cost of pickleball. Will pay the city back for the art funds that it expended upfront in order to resurface and improve the fencing up there.
Sure, thanks for community foundation.
Yes.
That's supportive so much.
Sixty, notification of second island bridge replacement.
This is not the closest, but the farthest of the two island bridges. And this is just a reminder, council, this started today. And the detour route is included that was adopted January eighteenth last year. If you're like me, you forgot that.
I did too, because it says Washington Street. Are we actually using Washington? Because the map shows it's going up to J.
They had to wrap around Washington from water, so.
They did, came up.
To go around to one fifty.
Yeah, it's hard to, on that map, it's hard to realize what they're doing there, but.
It's not there at all. Of course, we videotaped for damage and everything else.
They did, and then they also took physical pictures this morning of Washington, according to the phone call I got from that.
Why didn't they run out Race Street? It's a lot closer. It's not what you approved.
We can change that.
That's what they requested.
Because Race is right there, so I'm wondering what the process was there. Probably not.
Well, they didn't want people crossing traffic coming off of the couch to the bridge.
Maybe that's why they knocked that.
The amount of open right now is that off to the water that Maine. They probably didn't bring traffic to J so they could get them to Maine's areas.
Well, J, we'd get them to Maine too. They turn off a one-twenty of Water Street to turn on to J coming down, going east. So why can't they go west up to J? And Washington's a city street. I'd rather run them on state streets is what they usually like to do, but. I'd rather have them run Race and then us have to fix it and they'd help us with it.
I like the way you think, Greg.
And I, I don't want to express my age, but I will tell you that it, it seemed like just yesterday that that bridge was rebuilt before.
Now you could fall through it.
It's been a few years.
Any other new business? Greg, do you have any other new business?
I have none, Your Honor.
Anyone else have anything to bring before council before we reach here? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Bureau adjourned. Thank you very much.